We're going to call the meeting to order. It is now 6:30. If you want to sign up.
Yep.
If you would. Yeah, please. We're going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation. The invocation will be led by Michelle Ross and Mary Ann Heitzel will lead us in the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we're here tonight to do the business of the city. Please be with us as we do that. Please give us your guidance. Give us wisdom and most of all compassion. Help us to act justly, to love mercy, and to walk humbly with you always. Thank you for the good things you give each and every one of us, and thank you for the struggles and adversities too. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. Want to welcome everybody this evening. Citizens be heard. Our first speaker is Maggie. Maggie, if you would give your full name and address, you'll be followed by Jason. Jason, if you'd be up here ready to go behind her, I'd appreciate it.
Good evening. Margaret M. Kautz, 122 Mossy Cup West. And I'm here to speak on, I think, 6.5 on the signs. I have read it, I've tried to understand it, but my opinion is if this is, if we're going to talk about sizes of signs, I am not in favor of all of the very large signs, whether it's political, whether it's commercial that we see out on our fences and so on. I think they are not in keeping with the, what we want to express in our neighborhood. They are just, really are just overcoming the nice things that we have. So if it has anything to do with the large signs, I don't know the dimensions, but larger than six feet, or six feet, I am not for them in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Maggie. Jason's next. Jason, if you'd give your full name and address. Dagny Florine will be behind you, Dagny, if you'd be prepared. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you. Jason Linehan, 113 Chauvinville Drive. Thank you, council. I also want to thank the P&amp;Z commissioners that are here today. We've all spoken and talked about item 6.1 on your agenda, the accessory building, and I just wanted to reiterate that, you know, the accessory buildings, the design requirement of the masonry, I'd like that to be come out of this proposal here as P&amp;Z put forth. The special exceptions, I think, create issues. I think we need to deal with the issue right now. I think for design reasons, aesthetics, something that's built behind the principal residence can add value without having to have 60 percent rock. I'm not even sure how you match some of the design elements that are there on the principal residence, and I'd ask that you consider that tonight as you make your motions and approve this item, and I also hope that we can all bring it to a conclusion.
Thank you, Jason. Dagny will be followed by Wally Mitchell. Wiley Mitchell, sorry.
Dagny Florine, 111 Post Oakway. I'd like to talk about Agenda Item 6.7. I'm really happy to see that that's on the Agenda item because communication is really important. This is a lovely building, and I think we've all really enjoyed having it, but I think most of us know that since it was built, we've had problems with acoustics. And I know some things have been done to try to help with people who are hearing impaired, or even sometimes those who are not hearing impaired but just can't really understand things that are being said. And I would really like to encourage you to keep that in mind as you're going through the budget process, because there are a lot of people who have difficulty understanding and hearing what's being said at the podium. And I might add that there was a publication that came out through the U.S. Department of Justice Civil Rights Division regarding the ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act, regarding the hearing impaired, and I think in this case it also applies to people who simply can't hear, even though they're not hearing impaired. And it does say that it requires that Title II entities, which our local municipality is one of, allow for communication effectively with people who have communication disabilities, and the goal is to ensure that communication with people with these disabilities is equally effective as communication with people without disabilities. And it does state that covered entities, which we are one of these Title II's, must provide auxiliary aids and services when needed to communicate effectively with people who have communication disabilities. Now, they go on and list a whole spectrum of things that can be done to help with improving hearing, but they do say that covered entities must provide aids and services when needed to communicate effectively with people who have communication disabilities. And then they state, "When choosing an aid or service, Title II entities are required to give primary consideration to the choice of aid or service requested by the person who has a communication disability. The state or local government must honor the person's choice unless it can demonstrate that another equally effective means of communication is available, or that the use of the means chosen would result in a fundamental alteration or an undue burden." And I don't think any of us want to spend a fortune on anything, and perhaps there are some more cost-effective ways that that could be done. I'd certainly appreciate you considering those and considering that. I know PEG funds are out there floating somewhere. Perhaps if a little something could be done to help with those of us who either have a hearing impairment or simply have difficulty hearing in the back of the room when people are at the front. Thank you.
Thank you. Wiley, and then Walt. Walt, if you'd tell us where you live.
Wiley Mitchell, I live at 135 Turkey Creek. I'm here to speak on behalf of 6.1 regarding to the outbuilt accessory buildings. I am in favor of enlarging the capacity, the ability to build a larger facility in the event that it can be properly screened as described in the proposed ordinance. I think that from a matter of perspective, I have not been to any of these meetings and the discussions, but we're asking to add another 150 square feet, the ability to put another 150 square feet in addition to the 200 square feet, if I understand it correctly. Now, in the grand scheme of things, 150 feet starts about here to there and goes back to almost the last row. And for those of you who've lived here a long time, or those of you who accumulate stuff, that's not a whole lot of extra room to be considered, to be able to add on to a facility like this. And I just want to let you know that my support is for the ordinance as it's being proposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Wiley.
I'm Walt Sanderson, 113 Broken Bow. I too want to thank everybody. This has been a long, long drawn-out process for planning and zoning for council, and a little less for me, but still quite an issue. I've heard it said that the existing ordinance allows, only allows, an eight-foot building. But I note that the existing ordinance has not been enforced for 20 years. And I'm going to cite the evidence of the buildings that are all within the setbacks. You all see them. We walk down the street, they're everywhere. They're, the existing ordinance says they can be five feet from, or one, right on the property line. It's silent on where they should be. So I'm going to take the position, and I think it's reasonable, that the existing ordinance really isn't enforceable against anyone that wants to defend themselves. I think you use it or you lose it. That's my position. I think taking the position that the city already has the right to restrict is unrealistic. I don't think that's so. The proposed changes that were in the petition are consistent with the existing ordinance. I cite the RV ordinance that allows a 14-foot tall building. If you tell me I can't build a building that I've asked for today, I can park a commercial trailer there that's taller and larger, and I can do the same thing. I also cite the pool equipment ordinance that allows pool equipment in the setback. They're noisy, and the only caveat is they have to be five feet. I've heard discussions about, well, five feet's not enough for safety. I don't understand that and have not had a good answer to it, but it's consistent with the existing ordinance. The opponents that I've spoken to, and I enjoy speaking to opponents, I really do. It's part of life. It's part of life. The answer is, I don't like what I see on somebody else's property. That's the answer. That's the only sustainable answer I've heard. I don't like it is not a legitimate reason, it's not a legitimate basis for regulation. I don't like it changes from person to person, and often from the same person from day to day. The reason for regulation, the right to regulate comes with limitations. One of them is to not be arbitrary. I don't like it is the ultimate in arbitrary behavior. It really is. My constituents don't like it. I believe it's also equally on arbitrary behavior. So please make the changes to the ordinance consistent with the petition previously submitted. These changes, now refined, were previously approved unanimously by this council, by most of the people on this council today. There's no legitimate reason to reject them today. My request is 350 square feet, 12 feet high, five feet from the property line. They were previously allowed right on the, I'm sorry for going over, I talk too much. Thank you.
Thank you, Walt. Brings us to Item 4. Councilmember comments. Mike?
Bear with me, I have a cold. Good evening, thank you for coming.
Good evening. Appreciate you being here, and I appreciate the comments and feedback that we get on these issues that come up before us. Your input's important.
Thank you for great attendance tonight, and I want to give a shout out to one of our future leaders of Chauvinville Park, Rafe Kirkendall back there. Thank you for coming and representing.
Michelle?
Thank you all for coming. I would like to mention that we're having a town hall on August 26th at 10:00 a.m. Councilman Heitzelman and I are hosting it to go over budget. So if you're at all interested, you can plan to attend. Thank you.
And Mike?
Thank you for showing up. Thank you for your comments. We need to know what you think so that we can try to act in accordance with it. So thanks for being here.
Okay. Thank you all very much. Okay, that brings us to Item 5. Presentations, Commentations, and Announcements. We're going to talk this week about our July 1st City Sponsored Independence Day. You guys did a really great job. Michelle, do you have anything that you'd like to say before I can hand out some thank yous for the people in the community?
No, just the usual. Thanks for everybody who volunteered and everybody who attended. It was a great event, and thank you very much for staff because they do an excellent job of putting everything together.
Alicia, would you mind coming forward from the back? Well, let me start the, okay? We have a number of citizens here who supported our event, and I want to thank them for coming forward, as I've come forward, the Kirkendall family. Come on down. Without the support of our citizens, both our individual citizens and our corporate citizens, these community events would not be what they are. And so a bunch of fellow around here, hand your dad your phones so we can shake hands. And I want to thank you for your family's support of the Independence Day celebration. Look at the camera. Great. Okay, Maggie, I'm going to ask you to come on up for double due here. Maggie? On behalf of the community, I want to thank Maggie and her family, as well as the Chauvinville Park Women's Club for their support of our Independence Day celebration. Maggie, without you guys, we couldn't get these things done. Thank you so very much for everything that you do and for everything that the Women's Club does in our community. Y'all make us special. Maggie, you're welcome. Thank you. And I have a couple of others for citizens. I don't see anybody from Republic Services. I don't see anybody from Terry Kimmy's office, and I don't see anybody from, Dave Morris' office. Okay. We had some, and we have some plaques for the people that were the significant contributors. Every dollar counts, but these were very, very generous sponsorships. Do I have anybody from the Newer Street store here? Do I have anybody from Martin Marietta? Okay?
Did they tell everybody we're supposed to be here?
They were contacted. Do I have anybody? Do I have Tom Assarelfi? Nope, don't see Tom Assarelfi. Alicia, come on down with your co-harks, please. We had a new sponsor this year. We've never sponsored in our city, but that's only because they haven't been here before, and it's the Baptist Emergency Hospital. And we really loved having you with us, and I note that everybody enjoyed those bubble machines that y'all had. They were just the best thing that we had ever seen. It was like the best thing since cotton candy is what I think it was. You know, maybe the only thing more popular was the shaved ice that we were, that was being served. But we so much appreciate, let's see. Another one. I'm quoting the thing wrong. We so much appreciate the support, and we look forward to working with y'all in the community, and we are happy to have y'all as a part of our community. Brings us to Item 6.1, Discussion, Action Ordinance O. 2017-001. Proposed Amendments to Chapter 6 and Chapter 36 of the City Code of Ordinances Regarding Accessory Buildings, Outbuildings, and Portable Buildings and the Authorization of Special Exceptions. This is the first reading. Bill, I'm going to recognize you, and I'm going to include Mike as a possible presenter as well.
Absolutely. So just to kind of remind everybody where we were. In the June 26th council meeting, council conducted the required public hearing and later postponed any action on the amended ordinance. To kind of review kind of where we've been, because we've been working since a long time, I won't go through the whole history, but I have a couple slides you may have seen before, but there may be some new people here. I will say there was a proposed ordinance that was presented and created by the Planning and Zoning Subcommittee in late 2016, and there was a public hearing, and after that there were a number of changes that were made as a result of the public hearing. Again, you can see through that, we removed the number of accessory buildings, removed primary residence square foot footage as a limitation, changed the 16-foot height to one story, and removed stables and animal shelters as accessory buildings. Next slide. They did add in masonry requirements of 60 percent in A1 and 75 percent in the other zoning districts. And that is, I would just say it's not, I don't think it's written to match exactly, so there's been some concern about whether or not you have to match the brick exactly or not. I don't think that's the way it's read in there, and they deleted some other sections. Next slide. After that, there was a proposed ordinance that was sent to City Council in January 17. City Council passed an amended substitute, or actually a substitute ordinance which eliminated the masonry requirements to 60 percent and 75 percent, and adopted new portable building regulations in the A3 zoning district. And those criteria were stated there. 350 square feet, set on, concrete but not permanently attached, side wall no more than eight feet, maximum height 12 feet, no closer than five feet to the rear and side setbacks. Next slide. Planning and zoning kicked that around in February, March, April, May. There was a presentation of allowing special exceptions, and this was, the idea of this is, is there's, there's a difficult issue, and there's people that are passionate on both sides of it. Some who want to allow a very liberal interpretation and allow buildings, and some that don't. With this proposed ordinance that has been passed by City, by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and we did a public hearing on, which would be, which would create a fairly restrictive ordinance, but then allow special exceptions, and those that the Planning and Zoning voted on was to allow one portable building no greater than 200 square feet when it meets all the following requirements. And then here, side wall no greater than eight feet, maximum height no greater than 12 feet, and the building shall be located no closer than five feet to the rear or side property in all five zoning districts. And then the ordinance as presented in this council packet requires the masonry requirements to 60 and 75 percent, but then allows for special exceptions for those as well. And so the next slide, just to remind you, there are certain conditions which have to be met for special exceptions. They're generally speaking a lot less rigid than a variance. It's much easier for the Board of Adjustments to pass a special exception. There is hearings and notification required to surrounding properties. The Board of Adjustments would hear the case. And the two key parts of the special exception is that, as of the hearing date, the special exception would not substantially impair or diminish the presently permitted neighborhood uses, value, and enjoyment of neighboring properties. That's item number three. Number seven, that the special exception will not result in such property being incompatible with other properties within the zoning district. I think that's the last slide. Is that correct? Yes. So at League Council, with a couple options, you can approve the draft as originally amended in January 2017, which was mentioned before, was approved by City Council. You could approve a draft similar to that with adjustments and new amendments to it. You can approve the original draft that the Planning and Zoning passed, allowing for special exceptions, or you could approve a version of that with amendments that you could make. So that concludes my brief. I don't know if Chairman Jensen has anything he might want to add, or you have questions for him.
Mike, do you have anything that you'd like to add at this time? Okay. We've had our presentation. I'm going to open it up for a motion to begin before discussion. Okay, Mike?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to move that we amend the current building and zoning codes pertaining only to portable buildings, excuse me, at this time, with five minor changes to 6-95 and 36-36H. One, to make both codes agree to the maximum allowable square footage of 200 square feet for any one portable building. Two, to allow for a height to be measured from the top of the base foundation instead of the grade level. And that the maximum allowable height shall be 12 feet in total height and have a maximum side wall of eight feet outside the setback. Within the setback, the maximum allowable height shall remain at eight feet, but shall now be measured from the top of the foundation. Three, to add wording that will specifically allow for the use of a concrete slab. Four, to set the uniform five-foot minimum distance from the rear and side property line on portable buildings placed inside the setback going forward. And eliminate any special provision clause and remove Board of Adjustments from portable building issues entirely. And if I get a second, I'll be glad to explain my reason why I'm doing this.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Do we have a second for Michelle? We're open for discussion.
Okay, I have met with Walt Sanderson. I have talked to, got up to speed with the Planning and Zoning Chairman. We had a nice lunch. We talked about it. I attended the last P&amp;Z meeting where they proposed this. It didn't seem to me at that time that the Planning and Zoning was really in favor of making radical changes, but they went with this special provisions clause. That's going to lead to a lot of problems. I think it's very subjective. I think you're going to have people, I don't understand, you know, what the rules for allowing one guy to get it and one guy not. I don't think we have thought about that. I honestly don't think that bringing in RVs is valid. That's a point where Mr. Sanderson has come up with the square footage and that we allow those. Those are allowed under Highway Department rules for their size, and they are designed to be moved off of the property from time to time. There are provisions for those, and I think the last thing we want to do is get people all excited about, hey, maybe we need to look into RV provisions now. I'll agree totally that the enforcement over the last years of this ordinances regarding portable buildings has been very strangely applied. And there's been a lot that have been allowed. A lot of them may be grandfathered in. I just, I don't, I can't really find out. I believe, I talked to Mike Jensen, and we seem to feel that this portable building ordinance was 2007 or 2008, I believe is what we said, is where it goes back to. The 30-foot setback has been there for decades, and that is one of the things that gives us the space between our houses, that gives us this spaciousness that everybody talks about in our city's, you know, image. Big lot, space between the properties. If we start allowing 12-foot buildings, five feet on the property line, I think you're going to have more problems, more people are going to not like it than are going to be agreeing with it. If you want to see what one is going to look like, it's actually a little taller, but the new Public Works Building is pretty tall, and it's about three or four or five feet from the property line, and I already had that guy calling me and complaining about it. So, I mean, these are issues that I think we need to kind of like blend in. This, what I'm proposing doesn't take anything away from what exists. It cleans it up a little bit, and if we propose what, the 350 square foot within the special provisions, we will be taking something away from people unless we give them a right to say no, that they don't want it on the other side of their fence. Because right now, they don't, legally, you can't do it without getting permission and a permit. Now, people have done stuff, you know, without telling anybody for a long time, and that's something, that's an enforcement issue, and we need to, we need to deal with that. That's kind of my thinking. I think this is a floor. I mean, I'm not necessarily going to fall on my sword and say this has to be what it is, what I'm proposing here, but I think this is the minimum starting point, and we got to be very careful about this, or we're going to open the floodgates. And that's my thinking on it, so.
Okay, do we have any other discussion? Mike?
Have you, do we have that in writing so that we can look at it? Because I am not much of an oral person, but what was passed out was going to be my proposed amendment.
Yeah, I do. I'm sorry. I just, I think I have seven copies here, so there's one for everybody. Now, this has what I just read, and it also has a, I guess, a proposed highlighted rewording of the ordinance in there. I didn't read that because I'm not used to writing an ordinance, so that may not be legally written. I don't know. Like I said, this is a starting point. We got to get this thing discussed. We need to put a stake in it, and it needs to go away. And just a reminder, I am only speaking to portable buildings. Accessory buildings is a much more complicated issue, in my opinion, and we can deal with that later.
Well, my only comment is, is now you've given us pages of things to read at the meeting to review, when it would have been nice to have had all this stuff from the two mics beforehand.
I wrote it this afternoon.
In defense, you've had the one that I passed out for two months because each time I pass it out, we punt the topic, but.
And I don't understand why A1 should be restricted to two unattached portable buildings.
I think that's in the existing ordinance now. I cut and pasted from. I cut and pasted from the Muni Code, the thirty-six dash thirty-six H, and the, I'm not sure whether it's six dash ninety-five or six dash ninety-six. In the Muni Code online, it's six dash ninety-six.
Yeah. When this was adopted, when it was recommended from Planning and Zoning, we provided for two buildings in A1 and one building throughout the rest of the community as far as a portable building. So that's an historical consistency.
Okay.
Yeah, I made no changes on that.
Mary Ann?
I'm not a fan of punting this and continuing to punt it either. At the same time, it is a lot of information, and it's information that is important to understand so that we can make an informed vote. I don't know if there's any consensus to put this on an upcoming workshop where we could discuss it.
It's a great idea to postpone it until consideration after a workshop.
I'm not saying that we do that. I'm just saying if there is consensus to do that, because people need more time to digest this, to make an informed vote, then I am for that.
I would agree to that.
And if we can do it quickly, where we get it on an upcoming workshop, I see the city manager kind of frowning, because I know we've got a lot on our plate with the budget.
Yeah, I would agree that there's no way that this can be passed with, I don't understand the motion, so we would have, we would have to have time to, I agree. Workshop, sort it out, be able to digest this, because, anyway.
Okay.
Okay, Mary Ann?
I didn't know if anyone else had any comments.
I would entertain a motion to postpone consideration and recommendation from Council to the city manager to schedule a workshop at an appropriate time that a majority, that a supermajority of Council is available. Do I have that?
Right. I think this, it's important. I think everybody on here wants to get it right, and the sooner we can get it done fully informed, the better. And if that's at the next possible workshop, great. If everybody's on board with that, then I'm okay with that.
Okay. Do I have a motion to postpone?
Can I?
We haven't had a motion to postpone, so you can keep talking, Bob, until we have a motion to postpone.
No, I'm not, I'm not going to disagree with what's being said. What I would like to say is that we need to have, I don't know, we can't do it tonight necessarily, but we need to have a date set for this workshop, and I think we need to do it fairly soon. I know the budget workshops are taking priority right now, so that's the big, you know, that's the biggest priority that we have, and this probably needs to take a little bit of a backseat to that, but I just don't want to keep putting this off. We have a lot of constituents that want to see some action on this. So if we do do the workshop, I'd say that let's have a date set by the end of the week.
Okay.
Is that fair enough?
You can talk all you want to about this issue, and you've heard and you've, I think you've seen some heads nodding as far as a consensus for Bill to schedule a workshop. Mike?
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we postponed this to workshop and request that the city manager schedule it quickly.
Okay. We have a motion to postpone and schedule a workshop. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Michelle. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign the motion carries. Item 6.2, Discussion Action, Accepting Recommendations from the Annual Compensation Survey Review Setting Revised Pay Grades and Cost of Living Adjustments for All Employees as Specified. Bill? Thank you very much to the Planning and Zoning Committee members who were here and to our citizens who were concerned about this issue.
Okay. Good work. Regrouping here. Okay. Steve Worling briefed City Council on the results of the 2017 compensation study, which is attachment two of your packet during a 13 July workshop. During the brief, Steve presented a recommendation to adopt a 3.1% salary increase for employees. He made several recommendations, which included adjusting several grade increases primarily in the Public Works Department, and also discussed allowing three years of credit experience to be counted as fire captains, which was last year primarily an administrative of action, which we didn't do as we were trying to implement the study. In your, on page two of your summer sheet, you can see those grade increases, the public works servicemen from a grade 13 to a 15, accounts payable, human resource clerk from a 16 to an 18, a fire crew leader from a 16 to a 20, public works supervisor from a 19 to a 23, and the public works director 33 to 32 to 33. One of the questions we received, and we weren't fully prepared to answer at the time, was, okay, if you implement all that, what's the total cost? So anticipating the impact of the 3.1% increase, the salary grade increases, the three years credit for fire captains, and again, I remind you that we have two lieutenants that are making more than the captains now, and that's kind of how that worked there. The total cost of the general fund would be $119,815, and that includes everything but health benefits. That includes salary, Medicare, working men's comp, TMRS, et cetera, and about $20,000 in the water fund. So, the motion, we're requesting to accept the recommendations. I'm not asking for approval yet. The actual implementation of that is going to be in the budget. So as, by accepting that, what I intend to do is to plug these numbers in, and we in fact already pretty much have that in terms of our draft worksheets for the budget. The next big step is the city manager's budget, which is presented on August 3rd. But in the workshop, again, you just received the information. You've had time in theory to review the specific results, ask additional questions, ask for clarifications, et cetera. And again, I wasn't planning on going through the entire briefing at all, but that concludes my summary, subject to your questions.
Okay. Point of clarification from the mayor to you. It provides for a 3.1% salary increase for all employees. Bill, we had previously discussed as a majority of Council, the city manager. Has the city manager rolled into that recommendation, or is that a separate item?
I did not separate it out.
Okay.
That would be an action City Council would need to take.
Okay. Do I have a motion to begin discussion?
So moved.
Okay. Got a motion to accept the recommendations from the Annual Compensation Survey Review Setting Revised Pay Grades and a Cost of Living Adjustment for All Employees as Specified, which would be 3.1%. Do I have a second?
Second.
Michelle, second to the motion. We're now open for discussion.
So, $119,815 is in addition to the 3.1%?
No, that includes the 3.1, the TMRS, the, you know.
Okay, and so what's the health cost? I forget.
About $45,000. That's not exactly right, but.
So we're looking at 185 to 160, total?
120 plus 45 is 165.
Plus 119 plus 20 plus 45?
Well, the 20 is water fund, but yes.
But I'll, yes.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, is there other, anybody else have any thoughts?
Just a point of information, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
And I guess I look to the city manager for this. What's, if we approve this, or pass this motion to accept the recommendations, what's the effect of it? Just that you have the information to roll it into the city manager's proposed budget?
Yeah. Yes, I mean, I tended to do that, but we didn't, you know, we didn't formally, we only had a workshop. I owed some information back to the council in terms of total cost for planning purposes. I don't have the numbers of revenue, but we think we can, you know, we're pretty sure we can absorb that. We won't really know it until we actually put the numbers in. We just got today the certified tax rolls. That's now got to be figured into the calculations, and we'll get that sometime, hopefully by the end of the week, if not beginning of the week.
But the function of this motion is just to give you certainty in your.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Bob?
No, I was just going to reiterate what Bill said. You know, we talked about this at the workshop. I think we all were in agreement. We just didn't have the final numbers, and I think these, I think these look fine.
Okay. I would like to point out to the council members that the prior council had made a recommendation within its own body, which was absolutely non-binding, as a recommendation to the future council concerning the compensation of the city manager and to recognize his contribution in the community. And I would remind the members of their discussion on whether they want to revise the amendment and the adoption to include the previous recommendation from council.
Oh, I forget what it was, but yes.
The number was 3.5% for the city manager.
Okay. I'd like to amend the original motion and include 3.5% for the city manager.
Okay. Are you asking Bob if he would consider a friendly amendment and revise his motion subject to the second? Bob?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, Bob has revised his motion to be 3.5%. Michelle, are you revising your second?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion, the motion as presented now is to approve a 3.1% for staff excluding the city manager and to prove the city manager at a 3.5%. Do we have further discussion on this point?
Just to go back to Alderman Simpson's point, what that, the effect of that amendment just allows for the city manager to budget it.
Correct.
Yes, that is correct. Okay, do we have no other discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign the motion carries. Item 6.3, Discussion Action Review Results from the Public Trash and Recycling Survey and Options for Service. Bill?
City's contract with the public services expired in September of 17. At the January council meeting, you authorized city manager to negotiate updated contract. In support of that, staff initiated an online survey to get citizen feedback. We initiated that on the 25th of April. On all sources of social media and the website, we received 231 responses, actually a lot of good feedback. And I just kind of go over some slides here initially. So, 231 responses. We believe that we didn't have anyone stuffing the ballots. There was no reason to do that. Overall satisfaction, four out of five. The one, there was a couple of key points. One had to deal with recycle, and the key questions were, would you support recycling once a week at a cost of $2 extra a month? 54% of the respondents said they would. We also said, would you support recycling once a week if you dropped the garbage pickup to once a week instead of twice a week? And 65% essentially said they did not support that. Okay, next slide. So again, we're just going to go through some data. Four out of five stars. Next slide. In regards to the question, what do you most, what do you like most about your garbage and recycling services? Liability, frequency, consistent pickup, early pickup time, the bins, the large size, reliable wheels, construction friendly, polite employees, other takeaways, appreciated brush pickup, automated calls when the trucks are running late, appreciated garbage trucks picking up everything and not making MS. On the other hand, there were some other ones that contradicted that, but frequent responses when asked, what do you recommend to improve the city's garbage or recycling collection services? Frequent response, more recycling services, weekly recycling, more frequent recycling, bigger recycling containers. There was a mention of recycling glass and other materials. There were also complaints of crews being messy during pickup, difficulty of replacing the broken bins, frequent brush pickup, more frequent brush pickup was an item they wanted. We do it twice a year. There were some good suggestions, a durable reminder card that could be attached to the bin, saying what's recyclable, what's not. Mention of Republic Service does not provide a service for disposing of paints, solvents, batteries, other things. There was a period of time where Bear County did that, then their contract expired. They've now reinstated that contract so that service is available by calling Bear County. It's a side note. Several residents complained they were not always picked up. Okay, next slide. Again, this was the results of moving and recycling once a week and increasing your bill by two. 54% said yes, 46 said no. This is the same one, if you moved it to recycling once a week, but decreased the regular pickup to once a week, and the majority of people said no. Next slide. That's it. Okay, so, so what of that is we had a meeting with the Republic Services to review the terms and start the process of going through that. We provided the survey information to them. Talked very candid about several of these items with him. We specifically asked that they absorb the recycled services to once a week instead of twice a week at no additional cost to the city. I've gotten, I have not got a confirmation that's been approved, but I have a confirmation that the Republic Services will increase the recycled services to once a week without a cost to the residents, pending final approval. So there's a caveat. And I talked to Tom Armstrong, our representative today, who says he feels pretty confident and that I could share that with you without any hesitation, but it hasn't been finally approved. Okay, so with that, you received the broader comments in your city council packet. You may have some additional questions on something that we didn't cover in our overview associated with that. I would, I just remind you that despite the fact that we have fairly good assurances that Republic is going to increase the frequency at no cost, the motion requested was to authorize the city manager to negotiate, well, to approve an increase in the recycles to once a week with a potential cost of up to $2. As the residents have already, it wouldn't say overwhelmingly, but the majority of them have said that they would support that. Again, I feel confident that we can, we can pull the deal at no cost. There might be a compromise which is up with an additional small cost. My position's going to be at no cost because I'm going to hold them to it, but I'm looking for authorization to go up to $2, as that's what the residents said they would absorb. So, subject to your questions, and there may be other questions on the broader survey, I'd be happy to answer them the best I can or to relay that back to Republic Services. That's, I wanted to make sure I provided council and the citizens an opportunity to say, here's what the results were. And it's online, but it's also presented here in the meeting.
Okay. Now, Bill, at the very beginning of this process, you did start from the, we're not going to pay anything extra for this, and you went to the citizens with the small increase as a possible fallback, but that's your original negotiating position, and the one that they had, that you'd staked out with them was always a no change and two pickups.
Absolutely.
Okay, so it wasn't that we told them that we might be able to get $2. It was, you know, best efforts by the city manager as far as the contract is concerned, and that he has flexibility to go up to $2, but the initial position was, we are not paying any more for this contract, and we want two pickups.
You know, I, we didn't share the results of the survey. They saw the survey going out, but our request was prior to the results being served. And I talked to several of you who even suggested that we do it at no charge, so thank you for your help in doing that, but we, our position is, hey, can you do it for no charge? I mean, you're pulling recycles in, you're not making a lot of money, but you're making some. I will also say that we, we had a discussion about glass again, because every year we have a discussion of glass. I think if we pushed them, they would collect our glass. I've been, just be clear, if they collect their glass, they're going to separate it, put it into a glass container, then put it in the landfill. They're not going to recycle it. So, my position, and it's, as I understand it, that's what San Antonio does. They, San Antonio collects glass, they separate it, and they put it in the landfill.
And if.
I cannot say, I personally have talked to San Antonio, but we did have a resident that came and citizens to be heard about two years ago, who went to the recycling operations in San Antonio, saw glass separated, asked them what was going to go on, and they said, we're putting it in the landfill. we're putting it in the landfill. Republic tells me that's, that's what is common practice because the cost of glass is so cheap to make and that you, the cost of recycling is so heavy. And again, the nearest recycling plant is somewhere, and I'll get it wrong, but it's
Dallas.
near Fort Worth. And so, to load it up, separate it, transport it up there to melt it, you know, it's not cost-effective and recycling companies are not doing it despite what we used to do when we were kids. We, we actually got five cents for a glass and they recycled the actual glass and they, you know, after cleaning it.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. Do we have a motion? Bob?
So, before we make a motion, I would just like to say that, that, good work on, on pressing them for the, the additional day, but I would say if they're astute and we pass this and give you authorization to go up to $2, and we basically have given them the opportunity to, to do that right off the bat, if I'm an astute businessman, I'm looking back on the videos and, and looking to see what decisions were being made. So my, my point to that would be, why don't we authorize, we've been giving, we've been given a signal that it looks like it's passed, like to proceed with that, and then if we have to come back another time, I think it's in the best interest of the citizens to, to not raise that or give you authorization.
Okay, so you're, you're making a motion to...
To amend that, to...
No, not to amend, you're making a motion to approve the, subject to a once-a-week recycle with no increase. Is that what your motion is?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the contract with Republic, a renewal of the contract with Republic with once-a-week recycle at no cost increase. Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
We have a second on the motion. Do we have any discussion? There being no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, the motion carries. Item 6.4, Discussion, Action Ordinance O 2017-016, amending Chapter 6, Section 697-6, requiring back poolside, pool yard enclosure to be 48 inches to comply with the Texas Health and Safety Code. This is administrative ordinance, which means that on approval, it will be effective on publication and will not require a second reading. Bill?
Yes. In some code enforcement activity that we had, Chief Lacy noticed that we were not in compliance with the state law in terms of pool enclosure heights for our fences. In June, we brought you a draft ordinance which increased the height in our, of our current ordinance from 40 inches to 48 inches. At that meeting, council voted to postpone that with the question, in terms of what happens with non-conforming uses that currently exist and would they be effectively grandfathered? So we went to the city attorneys, asked them to consider that. They concurred that that was a viable option. We have revised the language, which basically grandfathered the pool, existing residential pools that may have a enclosed pool fence of 40 inches. And so, this ordinance essentially brings us into compliance with Texas state law, but it would apply to the new building permits, the new pool permits that come, and that the enforcement would be from here forward.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Do we have a motion? Bob?
I move that we approve ordinance 0-2-017-016, amending Chapter 6, Section 6.97, requiring pool yard enclosures to be 48 inches to comply with the Texas Health and Safety Code.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Mike Simpson is second in the motion. We're now open for discussion. If there's no discussion, there being no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, the motion carries. Item 6.5, Discussion, Action, Direct Planning And Zoning Commission To Propose Amendments To The City Code Of Ordinances, Section 24-6, To Comply With The Texas Local Government Code, Section 216.903, Regulation Of Political Signs By Municipality, And To Direct Staff To Propose Amendments To The City Policy 11, Policy 11, Signs On Public Property. Mike, you wanna make your presentation?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, the, this item is an attempt to bring our city ordinances into compliance with the local government code. A small bit of civics where type A general law community, that means that we can only do what the laws of Texas allow us to do. We, we can't come up with our own good ideas. And in this case, we've adopted an ordinance that it restricts in a way that the state law grants liberality. And so, what I'm asking in this item is just to bring our code of ordinances into conformity with the Texas Local Government Code. A anticipated, or an anticipated objection would be, well, the Texas Local Government Code does not comply with the latest Supreme Court decision on, on signs. Well, be that as it may, it's still the law in Texas. And so, we need to comply with the law in Texas, and once the Texas legislature decides to get out of bathrooms and start complying with Supreme Court decisions, then we can amend our ordinances to comply with that. But I think we, we ought to be in compliance with the, the state statutes because I believe they preempted us here.
Okay, do I have a motion concerning submitting this to the Planning And Zoning Commission?
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we, Direct Planning And Zoning Commission To Propose Amendments To The City's Code Of Ordinances, Section 24-6, To Comply With Texas Local Government Code, Section 216.903, The Regulation Of Political Signs By Municipality, And Direct The Staff To Prepare A Resolution Consistent With The Proposed Amendments For City Policy Number 11, Signs On Public Property.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second, we're now open for discussion. Do we have any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, in spite of the rhetoric that's been going around this week, this is not a sign authorizing, or a motion authorizing big signs. The state law already authorizes, states the limitations on the signs. It's just asking Planning And Zoning to, to bring our ordinances into compliance with the state law. And we're, it's going to Planning And Zoning because we've chosen to regulate signage as a zoning issue, so it needs to go back to them for an amendment.
Okay. Mike Colomere?
Wouldn't it also be prudent to, I'm really not sure how we would do this, it probably needs to be a new law, as Mr. Simpson said, but wouldn't it be prudent to at least seek an opinion or have Planning And Zoning seeking opinion from the Attorney General on, on the Supreme Court decision as it rules to signs? Because, I mean, it clearly to me is not in accordance with the Supreme Court decision that you cannot judge by content, yet it says in the law, state law, you know, except politically specific signs can be 36 square feet. Shouldn't we at least try and seek an opinion?
Mr. Mayor?
Habib?
Yes, sir. The, the city doesn't have the authority to seek an Attorney General opinion. The county attorney would have that authority, a state representative or senator as part of a subcommittee could have that authority, but the city in itself could not ask the Attorney General for an opinion.
Do you wanna talk the issue as we talked about it before?
Well, yeah, and so, I think, I think what the councilman's referring to is that a lot of attorneys are of the opinion, as the most recent Supreme Court case, that 216-903 is content-based and therefore is unconstitutional. And that may or may not be true. I think the, what would probably happen if it was challenged was that it would be severed and it would just, that, it would, the regulations applicable here would apply to all signs on private property that were not commercial signs.
Would you clarify that?
So, so right now, we have a state law that says that a municipal charter provision or ordinance that regulates signs may not for a sign that contains primarily a political message and that is located on private real property with the consent of the property owner, and it's a, and it has a list of things that you cannot prohibit. And, and then it goes on to say, the statute goes on to say that this, this statute does not cover commercial signs. So if you're getting paid to advertise, it wouldn't cover those signs. And then it doesn't cover signs that are greater than 36 feet, is more than eight feet high, is illuminated, or has any moving elements. So, if the consensus of most lawyers is correct and there's a constitutional problem with that, what most likely would happen is that the term political signs would be stricken and then it would be any signs on private property that this would apply to. Our recommendation is until the, until there's a court that, that determines or rules that this statute is unconstitutional, the city should comply with it. And even if the Attorney General, you know, even if, if a county attorney or somebody that's a client of the Attorney General was to ask for an opinion, that's still a secondary authority and you would have a statute that is dictating what cities should do with political signs. And until you have an actual court of competent jurisdiction that says that's unconstitutional, our recommendation would be comply with this statute.
Okay, so, so Habib, if you would explain, you said that you would strike the words political signs and it would apply to signs in general so that people would be able to have signs of 36 square feet on their personal property?
I, I think, I think that's one, what I'm saying is, I wouldn't strike it. I'm saying, the question was, is this constitutional and, and what would happen if it's not constitutional? And I'm saying that one outcome that a court could determine is not to strike the entire statute because you typically wanna sever out the unconstitutional. If you're a court, you don't throw out the whole thing, you, you sever what's unconstitutional. And the, and the claim is, and many lawyers agree with this, is that because this is limited to, to political messages, the statute is content-based. And so, one outcome is yes, a court could say, well, I, there's really three possible outcomes that I concede. One is the court says, no, it's constitutional, and for whatever basis the court would find it constitutional. A second is, yeah, they could, the court could say, no, it's unconstitutional because it's content-based, and strike 216.903. But what I suspect would happen is if a court is asked, if 216.903 is constitutional, the court would say, no, it's not constitutional because it's content-based, and strike out the content-based provision and make it generally applicable. But no, I'm not suggesting you do that, I'm, I'm only brought it up because the question was raised, is 216.903 constitutional or not constitutional? And the, the alleged infirmity is that the word political message, it means that you have to look at the sign to determine if it falls under the, under 216.903, and that's what makes it constitutionally suspect.
And just to be very specific about what's at issue with our ordinance, our issue constrains or restricts the sign of the, the size of one sign to 24 square feet. And that's in conflict directly with the Texas Local Government Code, which is 36 square feet. It's, it's a conflict and it was a conflict during the election period. And so, I, I believe the council and through the planning zoning should address it and clarify it. Whether or not they take action at that time, that's gonna be up to you, but it's, it's a conflict now.
Question?
Mary Ann?
So, the, if I'm understanding correctly, we are required as a municipality to comply with the local government code?
That's correct.
And the local government code says 36, and we're not, we're not asking Planning And Zoning to do, I, I don't even know why it needs to go to Planning And Zoning. I don't know why.
Your, your sign regulations fall under zoning regulations, and consequently, if you're going to amend your zoning regulations, you have to receive a recommendation from your Planning And Zoning Commission after they conduct a public hearing.
Okay, so...
It's really perfunctory.
So, so it's perfunctory to say, we would like to send this back to Planning And Zoning so that we comply with what we're, we are required to under Texas law?
Okay. Question. What is TML's position on this? What has TML told you, what have they told everybody else? Because we're not the first city, you know, Mike is, Mike is correct.
I think though, if you mean TML, I, I, my understanding is TML is saying you need to comply with 216.903.
You know that, or you're thinking?
Well, I, I, well, I don't have a, I don't have a concrete recollection of what they've said on this. But we can certainly look at what they, they've said, but, but it's, it's always been our recommendation since I've been with the firm that you comply with 216.903. And I would, you know, I would be shocked if TML's saying something different.
Okay. A question about vested rights for citizens. At the moment that we take it from, right now, all the ancillary signs that can go on in our city are six square feet, every single one of them, except for our political signs.
Right.
And for some reason, our city attorneys missed that we had provided for 24 square feet instead of 36 square feet.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and I don't know if y'all were our city attorneys at the time, although that's my recollection that you were, that Susan was our city attorney at the time that this happened, because I was on council, I believe, when we adopted this.
I think, I think that's right. I think we, I think we, it was an oversight on our part when we reviewed the ordinance.
But the question is, at the moment that we go from six square feet to 36 square feet, what is our authority, when this is clarified, to determine that we can pull it back to six square feet? Because I don't think any of us necessarily want our next-door neighbors, and for that matter, our spouses, putting up signs in our yards that are 36 square feet. Are we going to have that continuing authority or are we going to have opened the gate and we're not going to be able to shrink it again if, if we're wrong on this?
Well, I don't, I'm not quite sure what you mean, if, if you're wrong on this, but...
Well, that, that the Supreme Court is correct, that you can't regulate by signage, and now we have removed the words political sign, and so all signs are subject to 36 square feet.
So, let's, let's back up. There was a question about the constitutionality of, of this statute. There was a question about that. And, and really, I was trying to respond to that question, but that's really confusing what the real issue is before you. The real issue before you is you have a statute, and the statute says that it trumps local regulations. And that, and it sets out what a municipality can do as far as the regulation of political signs. And that's really what's before you, is that statute. You know, whether a court of competent jurisdiction at, at some point finds that statute to be unconstitutional, well, that's something that you, you can't say, well, maybe it's unconstitutional, so we shouldn't follow it. You just have to wait and see. And if it does, and if a court finds it totally unconstitutional, then you won't have to comply with this at all, you can create your local regulations. If the, if the court severs some part of it, you're gonna have to follow whatever the court leaves, you know, left as far as the statute. I suspect if that occurs, that the legislature will correct that. And...
Well, this whole dance had to do with the Supreme Court ruled that our sign ordinance was unconstitutional and unlike most communities, well, they ruled that everybody's sign ordinances were unconstitutional because they were content-oriented.
Though, if, if your sign ordinance is content-oriented, is content-based, then you, you really need to look at that. But that's not what's before you today, is, is that Supreme Court ruling. What's before you today is, is the statute and what the statute says. And that's the only thing you're being asked to send back to Planning And Zoning. Once again, the reason I brought up the, the Supreme Court case is because councilman brought it up and said that, that, and he's right, that some lawyers believe that 216.903 is unconstitutional.
And you said that their answer is a different, but Mary Ann, go ahead, please.
So, in other words, it's, it's, our hands are tied. There's a, there's a statute out there that says...
That's, that's correct.
That you can do this. And the, the fact is, if we decide to limit it and restrict it and make it smaller, somebody who wants to put a sign out there can challenge us. If we don't do it and we go with what the state law says, the people that don't like the big signs could challenge that as well.
And...
And, and so, but, but I think the recommendation is clear, I think the statute is clear. If this, if the Supreme Court does deal with that political verbiage, they'll leave the, the size alone, I believe.
And the issue compounding is that if you have a 24... And the issue compounding is that if you have a twenty-four-square-foot restriction, and someone puts a thirty-two-foot sign up, and then the code enforcement...
They're within their boundaries.
And then their code enforcement is forced to enforce it and have it removed.
Per municipality laws.
Per municipality laws.
But per the state.
Then we are, we are setting the city up for possible action against the city for enforcing a law that's contrary to the state law. That's, and that didn't happen this last election, but it was probably closer than you think.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments, discussion? Mike?
Well, then I guess our step, the really only step that we have would be to do something similar to what we did on the quorum issue in forums and things like that, and approach our representatives to see if they will champion this and bring it forward for review in the state legislature.
We can bring something up to council, but that's, I mean, to them to work two years from now, but that's not going to help us.
That's the point. For two years, if we go that route, for two years, we will be in violation of the statute that says we may not do what we've done.
No, I, I agree with that. We probably, you know, I'm not a fan of those, and I don't know of anybody who really is a fan of the big signs, you know, and in Chavano Park, it seems that they obviously just don't work. But I agree, we probably need to, you know, become compliant. I mean, we don't want to get sued over something as stupid as, you know, a sign.
Okay.
Especially when there's state law that says...
Yeah. Especially when there's state law that...
Says that they can be put up.
Says that our hands are tied.
Any other, Bob?
Well, it sounds like me, to me, that we don't have a choice other than to send it back to P&amp;Z, and then we have to look at it when it comes back up, so.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Michelle?
The only thing I'll add is that I agree we need to move forward on this, but then we're going to have to do some articles and some information to citizens, because I get a lot of feedback about how much they dislike large signs, and they have to understand it isn't something council decided was a good idea.
Okay. Any further discussion? There being no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item six point six, direct staff to prepare an ordinance which prohibits the use of City of Chavano Park logo on political advertisements and associated actions. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's a Texas Ethics Commission advisory opinion that says if a city letterhead, which includes logo, has been developed at, at cost to the city, then individuals may not use that letterhead as part of a political campaign. We had this go out with the official Chavano Park logo and the sub wording, Chavano Park City Council. And that would seem to be, seemed to have gone out, I guess, in ignorance of the advisory opinion five thirty-two of two thousand and fifteen. The, going back and checking the city council minutes, it looks like the city council has spent at least six thousand dollars to develop the Roadrunner logo in the city of Chavano Park below it. And so, to avoid future violations of the advisory opinion, I'm just asking that we change the, or add this provision to our city ordinances, and ask that the city secretary include this in the candidates' packet under the tab of advertising.
Okay. So, do we have a motion concerning the use of the city logo?
I would move that we direct the staff to prepare an ordinance prohibiting the use of the city logo on political advertising, and including that prohibition in all candidate packets provided to all candidates by the city county secretary.
Okay, now, what you've just done is you've criminalized, I just want a clarification, you've asked to criminalize this on an ethical opinion, which is not, you know, there's, it's not law, you've asked to criminalize this action, is that correct?
No, Mr. Mayor, what I'm...
An ordinance violation is a crime.
Well, let me answer, I'll tell you.
I'm just asking, no, I wanted to clarify.
What I'm asking the city staff to do is prepare an ordinance, I'm not saying it should be criminal or not criminal, come back to us with a recommendation based on consultation with the city attorney, and bring ourselves, once again, it's bringing ourselves into compliance with state instructions. I realize that an advisory opinion is advisory, it has some weight, it doesn't carry the weight of a court decision, but it's still the, the position of the state of Texas on how we should conduct business, and I think we need, being a type A general law city, we do what the state says we can do, and we don't do what the state says we don't do.
Okay, I wanted a clarification. Thank you. Do I have a second on the motion?
I second.
Okay, we're now open for discussion. Do we have any discussion?
Oh, yeah.
Michelle?
First of all, it was petty to put my pieces in there. You didn't have to do that to bring this forward. Second of all, I want to make sure that everybody understands that Bob Heitzelman had absolutely nothing to do with this. I'm the one who used it. Third, I'd like to explain the reason why I chose to use it is because many years ago, when Etta Fanning ran, she used it. I asked for a legal opinion, and at the time, our attorneys told us that an incumbent could in fact use the city logo. So that is why I was using it. So, as he likes to refer to me as being ignorant, I was unaware of the opinion that came out in two thousand and fifteen after I was re-elected last time, that said that that was something we shouldn't be doing. It is a Texas Ethics Commission's advisory opinion, it is not law. I don't have a problem with following it, as long as everyone else is following it. And I would like to amend the motion to include instructions to anyone who's running to not use misleading language, as has been used in the past, that includes things like the envelope that says, "Chavano Park Important City Information," or things to that effect.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to rule you out of order on the motion to amend, because that's beyond the scope of this agenda item. And I'm going to instruct you to just not vent, but I understand, I hear you.
Why can't I have that as an amendment?
Because it's beyond the scope of this motion, because now you've gone from the use of the logo to the use of misleading expressions, which is a subjective determination, which is not within the preview of what has been provided by Alderman Simpson.
I also believe it should be a policy, it doesn't need to be an ordinance.
And you could make that amendment, and that would be an appropriate amendment, but that wasn't what your amendment was.
Okay, then I amend it to be a policy.
Okay, we have a requested amendment to make this a policy as opposed to an ordinance. Do I have a second on the motion to amend? I have a second on the motion to amend to make it a policy, which would be in the form of a resolution. We're now going to discuss the amendment before we consider the primary motion, which is to revise the proposals. Do I have, do we have any discussion concerning the question of changing this from an ordinance to a resolution?
I guess, I guess the only question I have is if there is a city attorney opinion out there that you requested. I would be interested in reading that.
It's moot, though, because it was before two thousand and fifteen when we were told we could do it. And two thousand and fifteen, this opinion came out. I had already run, so it's not, it's not relevant.
Well, if it's, if it's somewhere in a file, I'd like to read it to get the reasoning.
The reasoning was that we were incumbents, and incumbents could use the city logo.
So, is that, was it in writing that we can all read it, or?
It probably was.
I'm not sure when you're...
It was before you got here.
Because since two thousand, October two thousand and thirteen, I've not had any...
It was before that.
Okay, I'm just, I mean, anything helps. To me, it's just, it seems like, I don't even know why we need a policy or an ordinance, because it's kind of common sense, I would, I would think, but...
Okay. Do we have any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion to amend the proposal to limit this application to a resolution as opposed to an ordinance. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. We now have the primary ordinance before us, or the primary motion before us, and it would read, I move to direct staff to prepare a resolution prohibiting the use of the city logo on political advertising, and including the prohibition in a candidate packet, in all candidates' packets provided to all candidates by the city secretary. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We're now open for discussion on the amended primary resolution, motion. Okay, do we have any discussion?
I don't know, I, I, didn't we just vote to say?
No, we, we just voted to remove the word ordinance, and to make the word resolution. And now we have, because I considered that to not be a substitute motion, but to be an amendment motion, because there's still a much bigger concept out there. So, so now we have the primary motion before us substituting the word resolution for ordinance. Do we have any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, at the risk of further being petty...
Mike, Mike, I think you're on a roll. We're going to approve this thing, so let's, let's just approve it. You have the floor, though, I'm sorry. Do you have the floor?
Thank you. The, the point that I would make is, I intentionally use the word ignorant, which indicates a lack of knowledge rather than assigning a motive to it. And so, that's, I'm usually very careful with my language, and that's why I use that, not to assign motive to anyone who did this.
That was beyond the scope of the discussion, but we'll come back to the motion. We have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same asign, the motion carries. Item six point seven, Resolution R. two thousand and seventeen zero zero nine, approving the City of Chavano Park communication strategy. Bill, this is yours and Mary Ann's.
I'll start it off here. We've been working on a communication strategy, actually, informally, for a while, and we've actually, thanks to Curtis, drafted it up, and it's kind of sat there for a while as we were going through our A and B list, and, but there was some redirected interest in that communication strategy. Also, parallel with that was the request for consideration of options of using and implementing the public access channel and use of PEG funds. We integrated that public access channel into the communications strategy. We presented that in April to the, to the council. We got some feedback, we made minor changes to that. And so, right now, we're, we're bringing back the communication strategy, which I would envision would be something that would be updated annually or periodically as required. But, now, staff's motion is to approve Resolution two thousand and seventeen dash zero zero nine, approving the City of Chavano Park communication strategy.
Okay, Mary Ann?
There's not a lot to add on to what has already been discussed about this. I think that I'm not the only person that is interested in trying to figure out what can be done legally with PEG funds. And given that we collect it from residents, if there's a way that we can follow the law and create a strategy that allows us to improve and enhance our services to them, especially in the form of any type of communication, I'd like to see us do that. And my understanding is that being able to bring this forward and having council vote on it allows for the city manager to put this in the budget so that we can move forward. So I move that we approve Resolution R. two thousand and seventeen zero zero nine, approving the City of Chavano Park communication strategy.
Second.
We have a motion with a second by Alderman Colomere. We're now open for discussion. Do we have any discussion?
The only discussion I have every time is whether or not this is going to impact staff resources.
We're going to direct that to Bill before I go to another person. So, Bill, if you would, address the utilization of staff and the impact on staff.
Not at this time.
But what's its implementation?
Well, I think that process of implementation is a several-year process. And so, I don't think that you can truly assess whether or not we can actually implement it until we have some sort of an overarching strategy that says, try to work through that. And I think that before there are any significant resource implications in terms of staff time and staff resources, that we would come back to you. There's some limited resource things that we possibly can do, that we'll consider doing. But when you start talking about the implementation, I think that's going to be a several-year process, that's going to have to be well-coordinated. But it may be faster than that, it may, it may not be feasible, but it's something that needs to be objectively looked at. And it's a good question that, as we move forward and this matures, that we'll definitely have to be, you know, transparent about and clear.
Okay, Mike?
This is all kind of before my time, so I'm just kind of ignorant on a lot of this. Where are the PEG funds held right now? Are they held, like, they're not held within the city, obviously, they're held...
Yes, we, we have it as...
They are held in the city, in the city funds. So, we have, we have that, okay. Okay, but to get it, as I remember, you can't use any of that for labor, was it?
Right, it has to be for...
Capital improvements?
Capital, capital equipment.
Capital equipment, okay.
Like microphones. I said like microphones and cameras, that's...
I don't, I don't want people to see exactly what I really look like. Now, that was just my question, I hadn't got up to speed on that, thank you.
Okay, do we have any further discussion? Okay, if we have no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, the motion carries. Item six point eight, approval of ordinance O. two thousand and seventeen zero one seven, amending the budget to purchase replacement backhoe for Public Works. Bill, this is an administrative amendment?
Yes, Mary, that's correct. I briefed you, I briefed you on it briefly at the last workshop. This just basically takes that with three bid proposals and solidifies it in an ordinance with a budget amendment. I can ask any questions you can. I just remind the audience that the current backhoe we have is a nineteen seventy-one that we bought used in ninety-seven. And it's, for the most part, failed across several different areas. It's a casualty right now, with a pretty steep cost of repair. And the problem is that we keep repairing the hydraulics, which means that the other hydraulic valves and hoses that you haven't repaired are going to find its weakest link and the pressure, they're going to keep, it's, it's not likely that we've repaired this hydro, you know, the original reason why it's actually deadline now is because the driveshaft and the differential are damaged. But since then, we've had another hydraulic leak, which means if you fix that, it's probably you're going to have another one. So, we did the cost-benefit analysis, so to speak, you know, informal as it may be, and you're not really that far off. Fortunately, we have been saving the capital replacement fund. The majority of the funds would, were already there available, and so, actually, for just less than probably eighteen thousand dollars over the repair bill, you can get a new one. And so, that's what our recommendation is, is to approve this ordinance, amending the bill to purchase a replacement backhoe for Public Works Water.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance zero two thousand and seventeen dash zero one seven, amending the budget to purchase replacement backhoe for Public Works and Water.
Second.
And clarifying that this is an administrative ordinance.
Clarifying that this is an administrative ordinance.
Okay, a second from Michelle. Do we have any discussion? Mike?
I asked this at the water committee months ago, and I don't know the ins and outs of whether it's practical or not, but is there any advantage to leasing and then rolling these things out every five to six years with new equipment, rather than buying it and holding on to it until it falls apart?
Yeah, so that's a good question. And that's one of those that probably is answered with, it depends. And, you know, anecdotally, I have some experience with equipment, both from the military, but my grandfather, who buys tractors, and I know if you keep, take care of them, you know, you can, you can sell them, in many cases, almost for what you bought for them twenty years later, if you've taken good care of it now. Part of the overhang that we have, that new shed's going to assist in that. That current backhoe... we have is a seventy-one, which its lifespan has been thirty-five years. So, um, that would be cost-effective if we can, uh, we can, we, we can do that as, as, as a purchase. And so, because, the truth of the matter is, we, we don't use it with that many hours a year, but we use it all the time, frequently. It's just not very many hours. You're, it's, it's probably, if you own it, you're probably not putting as much wear tear on it. If you had a high, um, use daily, kind of, you know, what you would see in the highway department and this, that's where you'd probably wanna lease it and you do all that. So, that's, we, Brandon and I've talked briefly about that, but, uh, we think in this case, a purchase, because of the, not the frequency of when we use it, but the extent per day that we use it, you're not, you're gonna, we have the potential taking very good care of it, and it'll last a lot longer and be more cost-effective to purchase it.
Thank you, Bill. Uh, anything else, Mike?
No, that's, that's fine.
Okay, do we have any further discussion? If we have no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Uh, discussion, Public Works Water, fiscal year twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, budget developments. Uh, Brandon, I'm gonna ask that you come up to the lecture, and in case we have some questions to direct to you. Bill, do you wanna start us?
I will. And I think this is the first year that we've actually taken a look at the, some of the departments before the actual city manager budget. So, it's a start, right? We did fire and police last time, and, and maybe we'll get better at it next time, but we, we provided some of those, uh, some of those basic items. Um, and we'll see how that goes. And so, we didn't get a chance to work through the Public Works Water piece, and I wanna present that as we go. Before we get really started on the specifics, I just kinda wanna remind you, each director takes in through N-code, and then they work through their, their individual line items, their maintenance costs, their fuel costs, their supply costs, office costs. Do they need a new computer? They need these kinds of things. And they work through all that. Um, in addition to that, and they, and they update that, and that goes to Laura and I, and then we go through a, a culling out process once we sort out the revenues and what's available, et cetera. But we, we try to do a bottom-up, um, what are the needs requirements, um, so that we get that unfiltered. We also asked them to take a look at and pride, provide us a prioritized list of capital equipment and purchases for consideration. Could you go back, please? And so, my experience in budgeting is that I tend to get, I have in the past gotten premature where I put something in the budget 'cause we staff think that we need to go through this, and we haven't exposed it to city council. And then it's like, hey, why do you, why do you have that in the budget? You haven't even addressed that with us, right? So, I'm learning, and we all are as we move forward. And we also know that, on a year-to-year basis, you know, your, your reoccurring costs are not that much. You can predict healthcare went up, you know, in this case seventeen percent this year. Our compensation went up three percent and the associated stuff. And then, we look at small needs, somewhere may be capital, like, uh, you know, new computers or new furniture, but that's all needs is. And so, really, it comes down on an annual basis where you really have an opportunity to affect your budget are these, um, more expensive capital needs. So, if we weren't amending the budget for the BACO, that would've been the first thing that we would've presented this year. But as we've gone through the discussion this year, we know we had some additional sales tax money that we can then fund that, and Brandon needs a BACO sooner than what it would take if we purchased it in October. So, that's why we, we pushed this one ahead. I've asked him to give me a list of the fire, of the, of the Public Works and the Water. He's given me a list, and I'm, we're gonna show you that list, but knowing that this is a needs list, and there's probably other needs in the future that is not on this list, but what, what we'll do is we'll start out with a priority list, and we'll say, okay, what do we already have savings in, in the capital replacement funds? And so, if you have the majority of an item saved already in the capital replacement funds, and it's, and it's scheduled to be replaced, it's a need, then that becomes real easy to fund in a budget year. It's where you get below that line, where you, you either haven't put it on your capital replacement schedule, or hasn't been anticipated, and you want to put it on there, but there's no funding in it. And that, that's where, if there's any discretionary income that we have available, that we might be able to fund that. So, I'm caveating this by saying we're, we're showing you this, because the majority of what the Public Works and Water are gonna do is gonna be the same as last year's budget with the increases of personnel and healthcare. And then we're gonna take a few of these line items, we're gonna try to fund them, but we don't know where that goes at this point in time. So, the first one I'm gonna present is the, go ahead, next slide, is the Public Works. And so, you see that Brandon has prioritized, and I've worked with him on this, thirteen items, of which item one was approved by, uh, budget amendment today. And he can talk some, some of the specifics, but I'll point out that item three and four are pretty much funded, and item seven has got, um, some funding in here. And, and I, I think that's the total cost required, and there's some funding that I think is available from the, from, from the water as well. So, you'll see that the forty-two thousand, um, is required. But, um, I will caveat the HVACs in that we have a number of HVACs in City Hall, of which we had one go down this year. We funded two in the budget, but we didn't replace two. We're only gonna replace them when they go down. But there's a couple of them that are really old, and that they're, um, you know, I can anticipate one, maybe two, in the next budget year. So, we, we had the flexibility of rep, just, it went out, we were able to replace it immediately without coming to you with a budget amendment. And that's the idea. Since we already have it in capital replacement, it's a wash. We would fund, general fund that sixteen thousand, but only use it if we're replacing that HVAC. Um, other than that, I will pause. I'll let Brandon talk, okay, why does it, what is construction material and scaffolding, et cetera, and, and kinda answer your questions as to what is the urgency of the need.
Good evening. Um, okay, so item number two, the construction material, concrete bins, is basically gonna be a place to store the material instead of right now, it's just on the ground. When it rains, the rain kinda just washes away. It's also getting muddy, saturated. Uh, there's certain times that it takes days, weeks for it to actually dry out for us to be able to utilize it. Um, by doing this and building these, they would actually have like a cover to them, but it would have a concrete pad first that we dumped the material on, has concrete block walls that go around it, and then it has like a dumpster lid that's on top of it, pretty much. Uh, but it's easy for dump trucks or a bobtail to actually come back up to it, dump it, then we can put the lid on it, and we go on about our business. Um, but this would be placed within the Public Works and Water Yard. Um, just something to help try and keep the material dry so we can use it whenever we need to for a water leak.
So envision Milberg Nursery, and they have topsoil, and they have gravel, and they have pea gravel, and they have, he has a requirement for four or five of these things and piled up. And if you don't have the walls and containers there, then it just spreads, and it's hard to actually scoop it and to do all that. And he's been asking to organize. I think it's a great recommenda, great recommendation.
So, if you've been in the back of our yard, which you're welcome to come look at any point, I'm actually trying to get everything structured and organized to where it's a free-flowing. Guys can come in and get their stuff. We can hit the road a lot faster, rather than mess around trying to get stuff dried out or pick through parts. We're getting ourselves organized. Um, the next line item is the old mower. Um, currently, we have two Gravely mowers. One is, uh, I believe it's a two thousand and seven, if I'm not cor, uh, that one's actually been giving us some issues, but it also had counterweight balances put on the back just for tipping purposes. Um, but it's also a long piece of metal that's a little bit harder to maneuver around the areas. I've been looking at trying to get some better zero-turn mowers, but also ones that are rear-discharged for when we do mow in front of Northwest Military. We're not shooting any debris or rock out at the traffic. As you know, we get some of the gravel off in the grass. Um, so, since it's kind of at an age of wear and tear, and it's, we're always putting it in the shop to fix something on it, I figure, why not go ahead and get it replaced since we had the money for it? So, that's item number three. Number four, obviously, is the HVAC units here. Uh, we've replaced one. We have six more to go. Um, the scaffolding is something that would be helpful for, uh, putting the holiday banners up outside, stuff like that. But also, inside here, we have nothing tall enough to get to the lights. Scaffolding is something we could easily move around versus getting a scissor lift or something off rental, uh, to do stuff. That's typically costing us anywhere from two hundred or three hundred dollars each time we get it. Uh, here, we could have that paid for within a year by just getting the scaffolding, and we already have it. It's easy to store.
We don't want a scissor lift?
We could. I'm trying to work within budgets and easier, 'cause also, too, they're very difficult to get through the front doors. So, you have to depower them and push them through the door, pretty much, so you don't tear out glass and door jams. Um, the next item is crack seal machine. I've been trying to figure out how to be more productive and get more things accomplished within our department. Um, the crack seal machine that we currently have is basically a forty-five-hundred dollar pump that sits on top of a fifty-five gallon barrel drum. The guys have to mix all of the material in the drum with water first, then put the pump on it, and then go out in the streets with a hundred-foot hose, and they slowly go through crack sealing. The crack seal machine that I've been looking at is actually one to where the hose only hangs off twenty-five feet off the back. It's on a swinging arm, so they can pretty much work around the trailer itself, and it can hold up to two hundred and eighty gallons of material. It melts it that day. Um, while it's in the machine, when you turn it off at night, obviously, it cools down. You've got the cooling factor to where it'll clog in the hose. This one, it does not. It has a heating element that's along the hose, so that while you get it heated up in the morning, that heating element also goes. It thaws everything back out in the hose, and off you go the next morning. So, while they get changed in their suits for the first thirty minutes, the machine's heating up. By the time they get out there, we're ready to go. So, by the time they blow off the streets and everything also. Um, that's not a hundred percent nailed-down number. That's the numbers that I'm getting kind of quotes off of right now. Um, hopefully, I can get one cheaper than that, but that's what I was kind of looking at right now. The mini excavator is something that we're, uh, looking at as far as the BACO gets majority of our digging done around here, but there are a few spots where we have narrow easements or we're in tight areas between, uh, the back of curbs and people's rock wall fences and stuff like that, whether we're fixing a fire hydrant or wherever. We don't wanna be sticking the bucket of the front of the BACO out in the street to where we have to close the street off. We wanna try and make things as safe and as accessible for residents as possible. So, the mini excavator would help out both on the water side as well as Public Works because of tight areas. Um, there's also like the thumb grapple that we would get with this. We could pick up dead trees and stuff easier, load it into the trucks, and get it out off the streets, wherever it may be. The skid steer is the next item. Um, that one currently has a few maintenance issues, nothing that we can't live with, but I've put it on the list because it'll probably need replaced within the next probably three years or so, but just so that everybody's aware of it. It's one of those future items. Um, for example, one of the issues right now is it has a hole in the, uh, fuel tank, uh, not in the fuel tank, in the fuel line that's inside the fuel tank. So, we have to keep it above a half a tank. If we don't start sucking air, it shuts itself off. So, it's nothing that we can't deal with. Just keep the tank above a half tank, and we're good to go. Um, the dump truck, Curtis has been working with me on this. Volkswagen has, uh, obviously, a lot of people have heard about the, uh, federal lawsuit that happened with them. They're now passing a lot of that money down to, uh, like ACOG, but it's going through like TCQ and them first as the distributors. You have to meet certain emission tests and so forth. Uh, we gave them a VIN number off of all of our trucks and everything, and just so happens the dump truck fits within the parameters. So, it's a two thousand and six international, but pretty much it's gonna be hand over the keys, and we get another pair of keys. Doesn't look like there's any dollars that we have to put out on the table for it, if I'm not mistaken. Hundred percent paid for.
Yeah, that's gonna be a very competitive bidding process that hasn't been established yet. All, um, many, many cities and entities will then put their own dump trucks, and, and, and basically, it's an emissions reduction thing. So, if we can prove that our dump truck has emissions, and we can make a case for it, then we might win that. But we're gonna try to se, uh, secure that grant in the next year or so.
Yeah, uh, the, the way that this works is that statewide, money has been allocated. Money has been allocated at the San Antonio area. Almost all the money in the San Antonio area has been allocated to the City of San Antonio. And there is a fraction that's available for the municipalities and the out counties that aren't Bear County. Is that correct, Bill? I think that's what we heard.
Yeah, the, the, the specific allocations are generally, uh, I mean, you're generally correct, but we don't know, and they're still coming up with the guidelines. We have, it's not, the application period hasn't actually started, but we're gonna, we're gonna work pretty hard on this one.
Okay, the next line item is ATV for ground maintenance. Uh, the main purpose for trying to get an ATV is obviously, we have the new trail that is coming between Lock Hill, Selma, and, uh, Northwest Military. We are actually, I've walked back through there several times. It's only a six-foot wide trail, has three foot on each side. Uh, some of the turns are gonna be difficult to get trucks in and out. You're pretty much gonna have to drive from one end, you gotta drive out on the other end. Um, there's not necessarily gates along the way to get in and out, but if we have to do weed eating, we have to do mowing, there's two low-water crossings. If we have to scrape up mud or anything like that, you can't just scrape it up, nump it off on the side of it. You're gonna have to pick it up and get it out. Um, in doing so, this ATV would have like a dump bed on the back of it, just small, basically, what I was looking at was like a Kubota or Polaris Gator, something of that nature, where you can put possibly about one yard of material in the back, haul it, get it out, any branches and stuff like that. Um, those all need to be cut, moved off the way of the trail, so the pedestrians and the users can actually use it.
Question there?
Yes, sir.
Would this be fill the need for the fire department to get, uh, evacuation letters back there, chief, or would you need something different from this? Can we get dual use out of this?
I believe we probably could. The only issue would be how to get it there.
The one I was looking at would, I'm gonna try and make it street legal, one, because if we use it, two, we'd utilize it for picking up trash and stuff up and down military. Um, there's times we have picked up a car bumper out there before. Um, instead of just driving the trucks up and down, they're not always easy to get off on the side in areas. So, a small little ATV of some sort would be more helpful doing that. Yes, day and animals, those sorts of things, too. Uh, so it'd have mixed uses across, across the city. Um, the next is a motorized gate. We do have a nice stout, probably five-hundred-pound wooden gate that's across the Public Works right now. When it rains, it gets saturated. It makes it even heavier. Um, it doesn't necessarily stay on the V-track that has been designed on it. We've welded it back together several times, and it still gets beat up because of the trucks driving over it back and forth. Um, so I'm trying to see if there's a way we could just get a motorized gate. Um, in the process of that, too, if we did that, we'd probably extend the fence out a little bit to encompass where we would put material bins, uh, due to the nature that we've put the new shed, uh, along the back wall, um, to the, facing the residents on the east side. So, that would basically just be helpful for ease in and out. Um, and also, too, we do have fuel tanks and stuff that are back there, just so when we're not there, it's closed up, no one comes around. I have walked into the Public Works building, for example, where we have had people sitting in there waiting for me. It now gets locked when nobody's around, so we do our best to keep things secure, so. Um, the next thing is a billy goat. This is also, uh, one of those terms that I had to look up at first, trying to figure out what's the actual name of it, but it's basically a vacuum that's about two feet wide, that basically will suck up leaves and light trash, but it won't pick up rocks.
And grass. It'll pick up grass?
Yes, and grass, too. Uh, trash, if there's trash across parking lots. Um, HEB actually uses a lot of these. Um, but basically, for like all the flower beds and stuff across the front, we're always blowing the leaves out to the parking lot. Then we gotta blow them back together, pick them up. Here, we could just basically drive over easily and suck all the leaves up and out of the rocks. So, that's not a major necessity. That's why it's at the bottom of the list. So, and then, the last thing was just getting a truck for me, just for taking the guys around and about. Um, I do get a truck allowance, but looking at how the insurance and stuff is played, um, there's times I'm taking guys to get their trucks when they're in the shop for maintenance or something, coming back. There's an accident, my insurance picks it up first. So, just looking at some of those types of things.
Okay, now, before we go on to the Water Department, do you all wanna segregate this and talk about the Public Works Department first, because they are separate depart, uh, departments? That's what we did with the Fire and the Police. Mike?
The, the WAC hasn't even seen the water proposal yet, have they? They have?
Yes, sir.
I would, I would say we need to talk about them separate.
Okay.
I would say this is something I think we need to go over in a workshop. When we do our next workshop, is that not what we talked about, or?
Uh, we talked about going over this at the work, next workshop.
So, the next step is the, uh, city manager's budget. So, what you're going to see is you, I'm, I'm going to present to you that we're going to, I'm gonna... to, I'm going to make something up. We're going to fund the construction material, concrete bins, the mower, the HVACs, the scaffolding and probably not anything else. This is mostly for your situational awareness. And, you know, what my big takeaway from this is, as I worked through this with Brandon, was that we don't have a lot of everything covered in our capital replacement funds, especially with Public Works, okay? So again, I'm not asking for approval, guidance, this is situational awareness, but it's fair for the directors to present their needs. And so it's pretty, everyone's pretty much familiar with the Fire and the Police because they have a finite number of vehicles and there's a lot of attention to that. So this, this was to raise awareness and over, you know, we'll, we'll see what we can do this year and then when I present the budget, you may say, well, you know, you got an extra two hundred thousand dollars, let's fund these, these other things or, but I doubt it, based upon what I know.
Exactly.
Based upon what I know, we're going to be really tight in terms of meeting our requirements.
Does anybody have any comments or questions or additions or deletions that they'd specifically like to address to Brandon before we go on to the Water? I do have a couple of questions if nobody else does. First, from a policy consideration, capital expenditure of nine hundred dollars, what is our threshold for capital expenditures? I, I thought it was higher than a nine hundred dollars. The scaffolding, I, I didn't see that as a, as a capital improvement budget item.
You wouldn't put that in the capital placement?
Okay. You're just telling us, yeah. But that, that's, yeah, but that's, that, that would be something that you all would just normally fund through your other funds and you're just telling us about that. Second one, just a clarification on the, on the mini excavator, is that, does that cost a hundred and twenty or does that cost sixty? And we've got thirty that's already in reserve on each side. Is it, is it a hundred and twenty thousand dollar piece of equipment? It's sixty.
It's a sixty thousand, it's thirty and thirty because it's split, that's required.
And, and how much is in the?
Capital replacement, we have zero.
There's nothing in the capital replacement.
There's nothing there currently, okay? Okay, great. Anybody else other than me? Okay. Go on to the Water, please, Brandon.
Oh, I mean, maybe the way to do this, it's, it's in front of us, if we have questions, we can ask them. I mean, if you want to make a presentation, that's fine, but I don't know that it's necessary unless.
Well, Mary Ann, I know that I was riveted to learn about billy goats and, you know, there may be some other things here.
I'm just saying.
But, no, no, I, I'm not disagreeing with you on that. Does, is there a consensus of counsel to dispense with the presentation? I think there's a consensus of counsel and we will address our questions directly to, to Brandon, if y'all have any. Does anybody have any questions about these additional items that are listed for the Water Department? Okay, Michelle, I also want Brandon to confirm the report of the Water Committee on the presentation, if you're not asking him that. Go ahead.
That was not what I was going to ask him. When you say water meters times twenty, so four thousand covers twenty.
That's twenty meters that it covers.
I'm sorry, Mike, microphone. Trying to remind everyone, microphone.
Oh, yes, sorry. It's like, Mike who?
The last time we went out on the water meters, most of them were covered by warranty. Do, are any of these going to be warranty claims?
There are still some of those, but typically most of them are now becoming over the million mark and so we're just having to start replacing some of those. I've pretty much gone through all of the warranty ones.
Okay, great. Mike?
What's a line locator?
That is basically going to help us locate any of our water lines where they're located, if they have any kind of a tracer wire on top of them, any of, anything that can actually identify where our lines are exactly at. CPS is coming in, in the next year to actually replace a bunch of power poles and we actually have water lines that are really close to some of these power poles. So I would prefer to clamp and lock onto the service or lock onto our water lines so we don't have any puncture issues.
Okay. Mike?
The VFDs on five and nine, are those replacement? Did they break down or is there a problem with them?
No, sir.
Because didn't we have those?
Basically, the Chavino ground storage tank capacity in five and nine, what it is is the Trinity well has been coming on and off a lot, trying to fill up the Chavino drive tank. In order to help preserve that motor so it doesn't keep turning on and off each time because it's pulling the water from eleven hundred feet below ground, we need to actually try to extend how long it's on, but also we need to extend the length of recovery time because right now it can run for three to four hours, but then it's only off for thirty minutes, forty-five minutes before we've drained that tank down and we've got to start filling it back up.
And, and would you clarify what a VFD is? It's basically a stand pipe that holds the water that's ready to come out as opposed to?
A VFD is a variable frequency drive. It basically, it will control the speed that the motors are on the wells. It's just another option, another avenue that I'm looking at. It's either going to be five or six. I'm not going to probably end up doing both of those. But basically what it is, one, number five, I was looking at just expanding the tank up. If the foundation can handle the weight, then I'll just raise that up another. But you have to take into consideration what time of year we're taking out of service because I'd have to drain it down. Wells five and nine would also have to be down for that. And then we have to retest the wells, then we have to rechlorinate the tank and get it all filled up. So we're talking probably a three-month window to get all of that taken care of. So it definitely has to be the winter time versus is it something simple that I can control the speed of the motors to where once it starts filling up, I just ramp it down and put it in a lower gear to where it's still putting water into the tank, but it's almost in a shut-off mode and just letting a little bit of water go through, through pass it so that it has time to cool off.
Good, thank you.
Can you clarify Chavino GSD capacity?
Yes, that was part of, if, right now it's a hundred and ten thousand gallon tanks. Originally it was a two hundred and seventy-eight thousand gallon stand pipe that was there, but the tank was only initially installed typically as just a blending measure, I guess. And so if we extended the tank up another eight-foot section or another sixteen-foot section, if the slab can handle it, the weight of it and everything, then I can have, instead of the set points of being twenty-one feet for it being full and fifteen feet where it turns on, I could raise that up to where, okay, fifteen feet is when it starts filling up, but I could be all the way up to thirty-two feet. So it runs for a longer time, but then I've also got a longer time for it to drain to where the well can be shut off for an hour and a half before it has to fill back up.
So apparently we spent a lot of money on engineering something and they didn't do as good of a job as they could have.
Basically.
Okay.
Thank you, Brandon, for your concise explanation there. Does anybody else have any items that they'd like to review on this? If there are no further items?
I will say that we're going to budget, we're going to present the budget to the WAC Monday. We're moving the August WAC meeting up to Monday and they'll get the whole budget and whatever, you know, however this all works out, we'll have presented something and more again to the WAC. And then I, no one asked about number two, but I, I will put a plug in for Brandon. He, he did, did some great jobs over in wagon, wagon trail where we eliminated some looping issues with, with the, the dead ends over there. And from my standpoint, I mean, and I could be wrong and maybe next week we're going to get a bunch of complaints, but greatly reduced the number of complaints that we've had in that end of the city based upon that. So that's why that is prioritized as number two, because we think that we can really affect quality of water issues, especially with that piece up there in, in cliffside. So, great job from Brandon on the, on the wagon trail.
Always, always. Okay, if there's nothing else, we're going to go to item seven. Brandon, thank you very much. Item seven, all matters listed under this item are considered routine by the city council and will be considered at the request of one or more aldermen. Coincident with each item listed, each unrequested, discussion will generally occur. Does anybody have an item that they'd like to pull from items seven point one through seven point six? Okay, there being no requests, we are now on item eight. All matters listed on this item are considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired by any alderman on any item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Do we have a motion to approve or accept items eight point one through eight point five?
So moved.
We have a motion with, from Michelle with a second from Mike Simpson. There being no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, the motion carries, which brings us to item number nine, a motion